I'd like to call the meeting to order. This is the time and the place for the regular school board meeting, Monday, October 5th. Welcome to all of you who are in attendance with us, and welcome to those who will be watching us on delayed broadcast or watching us livestream at this time. Allow me to introduce the board members at the table with me. From the right, we have Karina Hernandez, Bob Unti, Sean Heidman. From the left, we have Jan McGinnis, Mike Miller, excuse me, and Sarah Falters. At the center table with me, we have, to my right, Paulette Newbold, the Board Secretary. To my left is Dr. Theron Schudie, the School Superintendent, and I am B. Niblock. If you are here to address the board during public comment, be sure to sign up on the pink sheet that is on the speaker's table. You'll be given five minutes to speak, and according to board policy, we'll not be able to reply or make comments about your comments, but we thank you for them. Please read with me the mission for the Marshalltown School District.
Develop learners with knowledge, skills, and positive mindset to successfully pursue a meaningful future through personalized learning experiences.
And stand as you're able and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Are you good?
I'm good.
Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda?
There are not.
May I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Heidman, Unti, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries seven to zero. Mr. Sodders?
We've got quite a list of recognitions tonight, so...
We do.
So first, we wanted to, we have a resolution to read, Sarah, I think you're gonna, you're planning to read that. This month, October, is National Principals Month, and I don't need to tell you all how much work those folks do in our school buildings to make sure that learning, learning can happen under normal conditions and also especially under the most recent conditions, so...
Resolution in support of National Principals Month, October 2020. Whereas schools inspire the next generation of professionals, political leaders, artists, educators, and others who contribute to a healthy and prosperous society, and whereas principals are responsible for providing instructional leadership and professional management in our schools, and whereas principals set the academic tone for their schools and work collaboratively with teachers to develop and maintain high curriculum standards that perform in schools and objectives and ensure high-quality instruction, and whereas principals work to provide a positive support system to empower their students and to give them the right tools they need to succeed, and whereas school principals are responsible for the safety of their students and staff and the security of the school, and whereas principals are key to implementing state and federal education reforms in Iowa, and whereas principals lead the way in making schools accountable to students, parents, the community, and other stakeholders, and whereas each principal is responsible for fostering a dynamic partnership between the community and the school in order to create a positive learning environment for students, and whereas the month of October 2020 has been declared National Principals Month and is dedicated to recognizing the significant contributions of our nation's principals and the enthusiasm they have for providing quality educational experiences and guidance to their students. Now therefore be it resolved that the Marshalltown Community School Board recognizes the month of October 2020 as National Principals Month and honors the contributions of principals in the elementary, middle, and high schools of the Marshalltown Community School District by supporting the goals and ideals of National Principals Month.
Normally, we would ask all of our principals to come to this meeting, but given the restrictions we've had with COVID, we invited them to join the livestream so that they could hear and see the recognition being given, but as their supervisor, I am extraordinarily proud and of the efforts that they provide on behalf of our students, our staff, our parents, and our community, and obviously, it's been extraordinary time for them, just as it has been for everyone else, and they've done a great job of helping us to prepare for a safe reopening this year.
So we also have for recognition tonight Claudia Hernandez, who, I see she's sitting right over here. So Claudia was recently named to the State Board of Education's Equity Committee, and she's one of only seven students in the entire state who was chosen to be part of that committee and lend a student voice. So Claudia, I didn't know if you... Do you want to come up for her?
Um...
Okay.
Claudia, maybe you can tell us a little bit about your interest in seeking that position and what you hope to gain from it, and hopefully, we'll hear periodically as part of your reports, some report outs from the work that's being done there.
Okay, well, I was interested in it because I know, like, not only our district, but a lot of other districts have problems with, like, racial disparities and wealth disparities, and I think it's really important to recognize those and try and, you know, solve them for, you know, not only us, but some of the teachers need that too. I hope to gain more knowledge about Iowa, just in general, and the school, other school districts within it. I know that, I know a lot about Marshalltown, but I don't really know about, like, what other school districts go through, and I think that adding a voice to, from such a diverse community would help with solving some of those disparities.
Congratulations.
I believe the USTA, we have a $70,000 grant. Dr. Schudie, were you gonna...
Yeah, just real quickly, we were very fortunate to have received a $70,000 construction grant, which is being approved today, or recommended for approval today, which has taken a long time to iron out. Kevin Epple from FEH is, is here, and his team was instrumental in us working through the specifications to make sure that our project met their standards, and so I thank him and his team for their efforts, and then also worked very closely with James Christensen of the Bobcat Tennis Academy and our boys tennis coach, as well as Jeff Hubbard from the City Marsh Town Parking Rec Department in order to put together the type of future programming that we aspire to have as a result of the facility. We also recently received a grant from the USTA for $11,500 to provide essentially $1,000 worth of equipment for each of the 10 school facilities, as well as training for all of our physical education teachers, similar to what we did for golf a few years ago through the local professionals group there, and then an additional grant to supplant at the high school, some developmentally appropriate equipment. We also have another grant outstanding that's awaiting determination on for $10,000, which is a facilities enhancement grant, and we're encouraged to apply for that through the Missouri Valley of USTA since the USTA National had cut back on their awards during the COVID time, probably due to the US Open not being able to have dictators and things such as that, but we're very thankful for that financial support and just the support in general we've had from USTA throughout all of this.
So we also want to thank Tim Price. Mr. Price donated a microwave for a student at Marshalltown Learning Academy, is my understanding. So I don't know if Mr. Price...
No.
He's not here today?
Okay.
But we do thank him for that generous donation. I know that was very helpful to MLA for him to donate that microwave. And October 2nd, so last Friday, was National Custodian or Custodial Workers Recognition Day. So again, that's another group of folks that, you know, the importance of their work for the school district is always very highly consequential, but especially when we have all the added sanitation and deep cleaning practices we've implemented this year. They have been very busy. They did, my favorite part of talking to several of them this week was the Ghostbusters-looking fogger device that they carry that helps pull, they explained it to me much better than I'm about to explain it, but it uses electromagnetism, I think, to pull. I'm probably describing that completely wrong, but it's a really cool device, and it helps keep our schools safe and clean.
Todd may have.
Yeah, and we do have, well, I'll let Todd introduce her.
Yeah, we actually had a couple of them scheduled to come in tonight, and Kara Swaim, she'd like to come up. Kara's actually our lead over at Linehan Intermediate. She recently took that here a while back, does a great job for the district. I mean, as all, pretty much all of the custodians do a great job. I mean, would have liked to have had them all here because they have definitely had big change from what, what they've done in the past, and I really haven't gotten any flack out of it. So I think a lot of it, what we're doing with the electrostatic sprayer, which is used to, it has a battery charge to it, so when they spray on an object, it naturally wants to wrap around and totally cover the object. So, you know, like I've mentioned to many of them, I don't think we'll go back from doing that. I mean, there's no reason to, so. Other than that, I'd just like to give them a great big thanks and keep up the great work.
We do have a fine custodial staff, that's for sure. Having been a member of one of the buildings, they do a lot of work.
Yep.
We were calling our custodian for all kinds of special duties.
Yeah, a lot that aren't listed.
Yeah, yeah, the ones that you don't advertise.
Yep. That's it. Thanks, Kara.
Thank you.
Now, we have a presentation by Julie Hitchens of the Community Foundation, and I've asked Rex Kozak, our District Transportation Director, and Kevin Pegors from the City of Marsh Town Public Transportation to receive Julie, and Rex, and Kevin, if you want to come forward.
So Julie Hitchens, Community Foundation at Marshall County. We have a COVID relief fund, disaster number two of three for us, and when we heard of the need for transportation for the kiddos to school, our grant committee worked very quickly, vetted the grant application, and we are thrilled, thanks to our donors, to present a check for $9,000 tonight.
On behalf of the Transportation Department, I thank Dr. Schudie for writing the grant and seeking out to assist. The money will be used to help students who live within the two-mile, live within the three-mile boundaries, and their families get to, get to school because they don't qualify for the school transportation, but they're having difficulty getting there. So we're working closely with the city in working out arrangements of how we can get those students to school, get them back home. Getting them there is really kind of easier than getting them home because of what time everybody gets out. But Kevin, I've spent a lot of time, he's going to talk briefly, but we greatly, greatly appreciate the donation, and we want to thank everybody for that and making this possible for our students. Kevin?
And we'll say as well that we're really appreciative. Kevin offered on behalf of the city to reduce the price of the tickets for us under these circumstances so we'll be able to serve twice as many students as we otherwise would.
Yeah, annually, each year, we provide around over 20,000 trips to students, so I look forward to working with Rex and their Transportation Department on providing safe and reliable transportation to all of our students.
Thank you.
That might be a little bit difficult to do.
Moving on to the consent agenda. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes of September 21st? The boardwork session of September 23rd? Dr. Ryan, are there any items of note and personnel? Looking at interagency agreements and contracts, we have a plan from Iowa Vocational Rehab Services to provide services to students through their IEP or 504 plan. We have a purchase of Go1 Skillsoft Career and Technology Educational Curriculum in the amount of $2,540 for the high school, an MOE with Mid-Iowa Commendity Action Head Start. So Karina, you'll abstain from this one? And we have agreements for 12 special education students. Open enrollments, we have six out. Are there any items of note and bills? Looking at gifts, grants, and bequests, we have the Community Foundation of Marshall County amount that we just saw presented. We have a grant from the United States Tennis Association in the amount of $70,000 toward the facility funding, which we've already heard about. We have personal water bottles for onsite students and all employees from JBS and their local union in the evaluation of $4,794. Thanks to Jim Palmer of American Aluminum Seating, Inc. for his donation of bleachers for the Marshalltown Court Complex, valued at $39.56, and a donation from the Marshall County Arts and Cultural Alliance in the value of $13,500 to create sidewalk safety murals at each school in the district. Questions on any of those items? Looking at the disposition of obsolete equipment, we have a Bluebird Diesel Bus and an IC Diesel Bus listed as obsolete equipment, which will be scrapped for the guidelines of the grant we received to assist with the purchase of the new buses. Any questions for Rex while he's here? We have in addition to the School Improvement and Advisory Committee of Dr. Ryan, and we have a special announcement from Board Member Bob Unti.
I had requested that this be part of the disposition of obsolete equipment, but it's okay to let people know that without the coronavirus, I wouldn't be making this announcement, but since March, I have been, on a weekly basis, going to Coralville where my mother lives, getting her groceries, taking her dog to the vet, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. About three and a half weeks ago, someone informed me of the possibility of my obtaining a position as Executive Director of Trail of Johnson County, which is a senior service organization. I applied for that position then and was offered the job last Thursday, so I will be leaving Marshalltown at the end of this month. I regret not being able to fulfill the commitment that I, you know, wanted to do on this board. I regret any inconvenience, especially to the superintendent. I appreciate the work, boy, do I appreciate it much more now, the work that you all are doing and the value of this school district, and I will have one more meeting after this. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Oh, that disposition of obsolete equipment thing, that is really funny now, isn't it? Don't make me have to throw Dick Nixon at you. You're not going to have Dick Nixon to kick around anymore. That's a historical reference. Thanks.
We wish you well. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Falters, Heidman, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, the same. The motion carries seven to zero. Are there any items on the pink sheet? Moving on to the return to learn reopening update. Dr. Schudie?
Yeah, just wanted to have kind of a brief update. We're a little bit beyond the midpoint or around the midpoint of the first quarter, and the end of the quarter will come up quickly within the next two board meetings, obviously. As you and the community know, I think by most measures, knock on wood, we've done exceptionally well in both us as a school district, as well as parents and the community at large of doing a good job of mitigating the potential risks with students and/or staff getting COVID, the COVID virus. We announce every Friday the number of people who, in the past week, have tested positive. I believe it's been more employees than students thus far, and I would say in most cases, the, the place of close contact was likely somewhere other than school itself. The last couple weeks, Marshall County has done exceptionally well as far as the 14-day positivity rate, which is the primary metric that the Department of Education and the Department of Public Health and the Governor's Office have asked us to focus on relative to how we choose to go about offering school. We opened the school year and have sustained the approach of basically accommodating all able and willing students and parents to have their children come to school, or to make a commitment for a semester to not come to school and be educated through virtual learning, one of two virtual platforms that we have based on elementary and/or secondary level. A couple weeks, I think it was in early August before we were entertaining our initial reopening, we had pivoted at the secondary level to a hybrid approach, which meant we were going to reduce the number of students that would be in both Miller Middle School or Marsh Town High School and Marsh Town Learning Academy, and basically reduce in half the number that would be on there in a given day. So students were divided into two separate groupings, I think a blue and a red group, and then those students attend for two days, and then they work from home for two days, and then they come back for two days. And, and the reason for that primarily is because in order to return to school, the Department of Public Health, the Center for Disease Control, the WHO, all entities highly encourage that in order to be able to do so safely, that you have to make five different measures, and those are listed on that attachment that everybody's seen before, but, you know, it talks about, you know, self-evaluating one's health before coming to school or coming to work. Obviously, we do some assessments of our own with attempt screening regularly as well, and, and careful oversight, I guess, or monitoring of people's health while they're, they're in school, the frequent hand washing and sanitation, of which Todd spoke a little bit about while he was up here, the requirement to wear face coverings, either face mask or face shield, and, and as we know from the most recent Department of Public Health guidance, the face mask is highly preferable when and if possible to be worn because that can now prevent someone from having to be quarantined for 14 days that might have been exposed to the virus. So many fewer students and/or families should be negatively impacted as a result of that particular condition. And then social distancing is another big one, and, and the requirement or the guideline is to be six feet or more. The reality for us is that we, we can't accommodate six-foot social distancing at all times in all of our buildings or all of our classrooms or on the buses, and for that reason, in part, is what really drove us to need to mandate face coverings and then also go to the additional effort to provide dust shields for all students because the American Pediatric Association had indicated in addition to the other guidelines that three, minimum three-foot social distancing would be appropriate if you could ensure that students and adults were wearing face masks, and then if we add additional protection or covering with those barriers, it just simply provides more confidence or comfort in our ability to be able to function with three-foot minimum social distancing max, but still aspiring to get six feet where, where and if we can. I think at the secondary level, it's even more important because as we've seen from the recent research, our older students, teenagers and such, are more likely to both contract, spread, and suffer effects of the virus more similar to adults versus our younger students. And so what concerns, you know, on the one hand, I am extraordinarily proud of our community for doing everything that they've done to bring the positivity rate to a point that I would have never thought possible back in early August, quite honestly. But on the other hand, I'm still very fearful for what potentially could come as we head into the cold and flu season, and we, we've read and seen a lot about what the national scientists and doctors have to say about their concerns of a second surge when people are once again inside a majority of the time in closed quarters and that sort of thing. And so if I were to predict today what I will likely recommend to the board, either at the next meeting or the meeting following, most likely the next meeting, I would really highly recommend that we stay the course that we're currently on for at least the second quarter with this hybrid approach. The two things that concern me is if we bring all of the secondary students into both Miller and the high school in particular, it's going to be extraordinarily challenging to assure that even the three-foot social distancing at times, it'll be impossible on our school buses for sure. Our Transportation Department has done a lot of planning work and effort to devise a schedule for which we can get all students to school on time as well as home in a reasonable time, knowing that with three-foot social distancing, we can only accommodate about a third of the students that would normally ride on our school buses, so... So, most of our routes are double routes now where they pick up and drop off, and then they go back out and pick up and drop off. So, we've got kids that are being dropped off 15 to 20 minutes earlier than other students, and the same holds true on transporting back. The challenge of that is that I know in a perfect world, we wouldn't be doing a hybrid approach. I know that for some parents, as far as, for some students, it's, you know, they're not at a great position of maybe being able to self-regulate in terms of them getting done what they need to do when they're on their own over the course of those two days. For some parents, you know, places may be an extra burden in terms of needing to monitor carefully and encourage, ensure their students do what they need to do during that period of time. And obviously, there's not the same kind of direct contact and instruction or even availability of the teachers that they have during the times that they are off. But I think we have to balance that with the safety and security of all the students and our staff members that are there. And I'm just not personally at a place of comfort as Superintendent of the School District recommending that we bring everybody back at this particular point. I think there will be great potential as we near the end of the semester of feeling differently if we can show that we can actually manage the situation and sustain a great level of low positivity as we enter that first half of the flu and cold season. I would feel much more comfortable if we were at the same position we are near it, let's say in November, December, as we are now in October there. But definitely I'd like to open it up for board comment or discussion as it relates to this issue, because we've got essentially a month before ultimately the decision has to be made.
Aaron, thanks for your comments. I appreciate it. I appreciate you giving us a heads up before the vote on it at the next meeting. Can you tell me a little bit about how students in general at Miller and MHS are doing academically? You've got the three-week grades at the high school. Have we looked at how they're doing in this model versus how they did last year, at least on a total, to see if the academic, if they're actually learning as much as what we want them to or did last year?
Yeah, I don't have that information for you this evening, but we can certainly have Mrs. Wyatt, Mr. Gosling, Mr. Glennam, Mrs. Kell be at that next meeting to provide you with an update on that.
It seems to me this is a, you know, this is a balance of public safety versus delivering good academic learning. And you're trying to balance those two things. And so, you, what you're doing is taking the safety approach, but maybe we need to know a little bit more about how good are the kids really doing in this model? I've talked to you about anecdotal evidence from parents that have called and complained that this isn't working for them. I've heard others that say it's doing okay. And so, it'd be nice to hear sort of in total, how is it doing, so that we can make that balanced decision. So, if we dialed the clock back 12 weeks ago or 10, 11 weeks ago, what we said then was, when the positivity rate got, you know, to the level that it is now, 3.7%, we'd be sending the kids back. And now, here we are, 10 weeks later, now we're not going to send the kids back. And so, maybe we need a little more data about the academic excellence of how we're doing before we decide or before, it would be, you know, before I could agree to your recommendation that is a high public safety approach.
Yeah. Well, and I'd like to clarify that I don't believe on record I've ever said that we would necessarily send everybody back. Obviously, we would want to be below 5%. Many states in the country have to be below 5% not to be doing virtual-only learning, quite honestly. So, Iowa has the highest threshold for which to go to an all-virtual learning model. Most states are at 10 or 5% for that. But you're exactly right. It's a balancing act between what's in the best interest of our students and our employees as far as the health and safety goes, and how to balance that with ensuring that all students learn to the highest ability that they can under the circumstances. And the one thing that I can with confidence say is that our current approach is much more successful than last spring's approach with voluntary, remote distance learning, for which we know there was a significant amount of lack of engagement or lack of interest in learning.
Some of my comments are driven by, maybe you read this morning's Des Moines Register front page story about City of Des Moines, where many of their virtual learners, hundreds and hundreds, haven't even signed onto the computer yet, and their virtual attendance is very, very low. And so, that sounds like it's not going real well.
Mm-hmm.
And so, you know, it'd be nice to know how we're doing.
Yep. And I think we can give an update on that as well, because I know that all of our staff have been going to extraordinary ends to best ensure everybody that's supposed to get engaged in the virtual learning is doing so. And those that are coming, supposed to be coming to class are doing so, they're making home visits, as well as the other types of communications and clarifying things with parents if there's confusion there as to what those expectations are. So, I'm very confident we're in a better shape than what you read, but I know that there's room for improvement as well, both with our virtual learners, some of our virtual learners, as well as the kids that are operating on the hybrid model, and particularly on the days that they're home working.
One thing that I am interested in knowing as well as the progress that are some of our upper grades are doing, but also how are we tracking that attendance for those virtual learners? And is that something that's going to be along the lines as chronically absent if they haven't logged in? I know there's some that haven't, so how are we tracking that? So, along the line with what you just said of giving us some numbers of who's logged in and how, so how are we tracking it as far as our attendance?
Other comments, questions?
Do we have a sense of the trend in the county positivity rates, like since school started? Just generally, I'm not asking for any specific things. Do you have a sense of that?
Well, it's come significantly down since schools started, because we had been in double digits since, you know, the virus got into the state. We went from the fourth highest county in positivity, top five for a long time, to now, we were the second lowest county, actually, I think last week. I think we're fourth now, so it's increased a little bit, but from last week, but...
It's, that's under 5% currently?
It's under 5.
Like in the last...
3.7, something.
3.7, is it?
Yeah, and it depends on, I mean, based on the state's measurement of it, it's like 3.6 or 3.8. There's two other people, former employees of the Department of Public Health that are tracking, and they generally come up with different numbers based on what they include or don't include using exclusively the state's data. But by all measures, no matter whose you look at, we're no more than 10, 11%, and on the low end, we're in the 3%.
Well, as long as it's a positive trend, I'm going to give Paul it all the credit. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kretzinger, would you like to speak with us?
Sure. Amy? Tonight, I'm going to talk a little bit about the most recent updates around dyslexia. There's been some changes in legislation and some studies done by the state. And as the board requested this as a topic during the summer, we thought we would try to catch you up on current events. So, tonight, the three things we're going to talk about is helping you understand what is the Dyslexia State Task Force, also what the Iowa Department of Education made for recommendations based on that task force and legislative updates. I'm also going to talk a little bit about the steps the district has taken for learning around dyslexia. So, I'm not going to read this to you, but this is the current statewide definition of dyslexia. So, if you look at it maybe on your desktop, you'll see some color difference in some of the words. Some of the things I want to point out, in the current definition, when they say a specific learning disability, so this is the first time now that they have defined it out of the medical world and put it in an educational realm. Before dyslexia was a medical diagnosis, and so it was not something that schools were in a position to do diagnostics on and find ways to serve in particular. That has changed. In the second bullet, you see an "and." You have to meet both of the criteria in order to meet that definition. So, you have to have both difficulties with accuracy or fluent word recognition and poor spelling and decoding abilities. It's not part, it's all. And then at the very end, we talk about, as well as you have to demonstrate some secondary consequences with your struggles around understanding what you read, as well as show that it's impeding your growth of vocabulary. So, people usually ask, how prevalent is dyslexia? Well, it really depends on who you ask. Because it's neurological and development, we're getting more and more sophisticated in our understanding of it. But depending on which national organization you look at, they'll talk about between 5 and 17% in general of people have dyslexia. So, during the 2018 legislative session, the legislative body asked the Iowa Department of Education, which IO DOE stands for that, to spend a year to study really what's going on with students who may have characteristics of dyslexia across the United States as well as within our schools. They put together a group that represented both teachers, administrators, people from outside education, and people from some of those representative organizations like Decoding Dyslexia Iowa. After a year of study in November 2019, they released a summary of their findings, which also included recommendations. Now, on the state website, you can see the full report. It's about 60 pages. So, I've hit some of the highlights of that to save you some reading, but you can feel free to download it and read through it. And really, those recommendations were broken down into these five different areas. So, what did they want the legislative session to consider during the 2020 session? What did they want the Iowa Department of Education to consider? What did they want our area education agencies to consider? School districts, and then also places of higher education who have teacher preparation So, I'm just going to touch on a few of the highlights of their, the task force's recommendations. So, they wanted the Board of Educational Examiners develop an endorsement around supporting dyslexia in particular. They also wanted there to become a board that focuses on dyslexia in particular. They wanted school boards to assure all licensed educators complete, it's an online learning program by Iowa Reading Research Center, by July of 2021. They wanted funding to be shifted to the AA system so they can have a dyslexia consultant, someone who has expertise in the area. And then they wanted the current definition to be amended. So, the definition you saw just a couple of slides ago is the current amended definition. So, that's what they wanted for that group. Jumping over to the Department of Education, they wanted written dyslexia-specific guidance for Iowa schools. They also wanted the Department of Ed to have a dyslexia consultant. They also wanted guidance issued on characteristics of effective instruction that support how do you help kids overcome dyslexia. And they wanted the Department of Ed and the AA system to collaboratively develop professional learning around this topic. Now, for our AA system, they wanted them to work on teaching the Dyslexia Professional Learning Framework by July of 2020. They wanted to make sure that there was at least one staff member at every AA to engage in the pilot program of having that dyslexia-specific endorsement. And then they wanted this collaborative professional development I talked about just a second ago. Most importantly for us, their recommendations for school districts is that we should ensure all licensed educators complete that Reading Research Center's Dyslexia Module by July of 2021. For the 2223 school year, they want us to engage in a self-assessment process to understand more about our explicit teaching practices and how that aligns to the characteristics of effective instruction. And by '25, they wanted districts to ensure educators, paras, administrators, and school board members participate in professional learning around dyslexia. And then for those institutions of higher learning that have teacher preparation programs, they really had two main points. They wanted an action plan developed by each institution to provide differentiated training on instruction related to dyslexia, because if you were coming out of, becoming a first-year teacher, you never had any background or training in the content. They also wanted you to consider offering training towards the new Board of Education endorsement, whatever that would look like. So, these were the recommendations from the task force. So, let's talk about actually what was adopted during our legislative session. So, they decided that they wanted the Board of Education to develop and adopt that advanced endorsement that was recommended. They wanted the definition to change on what it means to have characteristics of dyslexia based on the Decoding Dyslexia Iowa definition. That's a parent-based organization that really focuses on supporting children and families who have characteristics of dyslexia. And they wanted all board of directors at schools to require all certified educators, paraeducators, and administrators to complete that training that we talked about. So, that was really all that came out of the Senate file at the last legislative session. So, now I want to talk about how we have focused on doing some of this learning along the way. Amy, can I get you to jump to the next slide, please? Thank you. So, this has been an area we've been looking at for a little while now. And I say we, Dr. Stevenson's also been part of this conversation. So, we have been attending professional conferences, and some are listed there, to help us get a better understanding of, you know, what does it mean to have someone who has dyslexia and the characteristics associated with that. We've had different employees already complete that Iowa Reading Research Center Dyslexia Module. We've been doing book studies. Two of the most prevalent authors out there on the subject are either David Kilpratrick or Luisa Moats, who have spent pretty much their entire career trying to understand, you know, how this disability affects others. Our Summer Academy has also offered learnings on the topic, and our AA system has offered courses along the way. We've also taken steps to adopt some of the instructional materials aligned with the characteristics of effective instruction. So, if you think back to some of those purchases that you have allowed us to move forward with, Really Great Reading is one of those large ones we use across the district. And many of the instructional approaches meet the expectations around supporting effective instruction. System 44 is an online program we use at our secondary building, especially Miller Middle School, for kids with disabilities, and it's set up the same way. And then the Hagerty Phrenemic Awareness Materials, I don't believe you've had much information about, but it's essentially how do you set up some of those early decoding skills for our youngest learners? And then something that we're looking to do in the future, because COVID threw a little wrench in some of our professional development plans for this year, Orton-Gillingham is one of the most well-known and respected approach systems when it comes to working with dyslexia. And so, they do offer different levels of training. Our intention was to have a path for staff to start building by building, learning this pathway, so we could better support our kids. Now, we decided it was best to have those trainings happen in person, because it's a very hands-on approach. And because everything went virtual this year, we put a pause on that, and we're hoping to be able to do in-person learning for the coming year. One last comment I have is that this is... One last comment I have is that this is Dyslexia Awareness Month, so make sure that, you know, keep that in the back of your mind. This presentation was very timely. And now, what questions do you have?
I just have one comment. I actually have read this whole 60-page report, because as you know, this is my area. When you go to train your administrators, and an administrator asked me about this, she says, "Everyone always wants to define dyslexia for me, and they want me to be able to identify dyslexic students, but as an administrator, I want to know what do I do about it?" And obviously, I've had the training in this, but I think it's important for administrators to know that these children can be taught to read, and we do know how to do it, and that's why you're doing your Really Great Reading and your Orton-Gillingham. But I think making sure as you train administrators that you include that part of it.
Absolutely. You know, the online module that the Reading Research Center's put out is really helping people understand that dyslexia takes many shapes and forms, and so it affects people differently. So the next part of that learning would be, now that we know about it, what do we do about it?
What is commonly the grade level that they get diagnosed with dyslexia?
Say that one more time.
Like, what's the grade level that they get diagnosed with this?
Well, it depends on who you talk to.
Okay.
You know, some people think that you can diagnose it in the lower elementary levels. Others think that you need to get to kind of that intermediate, line-of-hand level in order to allow some of those teaching practices to take place.
Anything else for Matt?
Do we have a percentage in our district of how many kids have dyslexia or not?
We don't have a percentage, because until very recently, it's been a medical diagnosis. So families would have to go to an outside organization to get that diagnosis.
Okay.
The way we have operated and the state of Iowa has operated, we know how many kids have reading services or literacy services, and so that's our best guess.
Thank you. And that's most of the children in special education?
They may have one or more characteristics of it, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Thanks, Matt.
Okay, so we're just going to do a little bit about, like, what's been going on at the high school and, like, other, like, events that have been taking place. So over the past few weeks, fall sports have been, like, finishing up. So senior nights have been happening. So September 24th, we had the swim team have their senior night. So that's Claudia Hernandez, Hannah Taylor, and Diana Espinoza. And then on September 8th, volleyball also had their senior night. And then this past Friday, the band and the color were honored, and they also had their senior night, and you could see that in the top right corner. And then football was on September 11th, and then I actually messed up on dance team. Dance team has theirs during basketball season, so in a few more months.
Homecoming happened last week, but this week, we're going to have a spirit week, since we weren't able to due to picture day. The homecoming court this year consisted of Millie Brahas, Natalie Duncan, Avery Case, Maggie Augustine, Anna DiOrio, Emma Bear, and Holly Braga. And then the boys were Noah Hermanson, Eli Thiessen, Ethan Venskuter, Carson Williams, Malik Case, Brendan Bates, and Sergio Zaragoza. So for this spirit week, we have movie Monday, and then I'm not entirely sure about the rest of the days, but...
Yeah, that's in the last slide.
Oh, yeah, they're right there. And, oh, tie-dye Tuesday, day-to-day Wednesday, and then tacky tourist Thursday, and then I'm assuming it's just spirit, wear your colors for Friday. Other upcoming events this week are the 2020 blood drive, and that's led by Noah Hermanson and other MHS seniors. It'll be taking place on October 21st and the 22nd.
Yeah, so that's led by the National Honor Society seniors, and so Noah Hermanson would be the chairman for that. Also, I think the, some, well, juniors haven't been assigned yet for National Honor Society, but that has been, the emails for that have been released, I think it was this last week?
Yeah.
To get more people on that National Honor Society, since they weren't able to be recruited
Any questions or comments?
Where do they do the blood drive at?
They're going to do that, I think they're doing it at the high school.
Yeah.
And probably in the same place as other years, in the auditorium, in the lobby of the auditorium. And other years, it's been pretty much, like, pretty, each station is distanced, so I feel like it's not going to be a big issue with, like, keeping people separated. And then timesheets, there's, like, time slots you go down there, so there's not that many people that are down there when that happens to begin with. So I feel like that won't be an issue this year.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks.
Thank you very much. Good first. Or is it for a next reading?
No, for this one.
Come join us, come join us. You were hoping I wouldn't ask you, or?
Welcome back. In the 1990s, this question, "Why are we not getting what we want?", came to dominate my professional life. Every book I read, every conference I attended seemed to muddy the water and take me further from an answer. And then, I was elected to serve on the Board of the North Central Regional Educational Laboratory, one of seven federally-funded R&amp;D labs across the country. It's now known as REEL Midwest. My position on the Board gave me access to a rich network of expert practitioners and cutting-edge theorists, and a terrific research library. And it was in that library that I discovered an answer that could survive the tests of common sense and professional scrutiny. It was an amazing moment, made more so by the fact that after all my exposure to late 20th-century experts, my moment of clarity was triggered by a book published over 200 years ago, written in the late 18th century by my first guest, Thomas Jefferson. Mr. President, welcome to the great conversation.
Thank you, Mr. Volmer.
Mr. President, the topic today is education, and specifically, I want to discuss a seminal document you wrote as governor of Virginia six years prior to your presidency.
I believe you were referring to my notes on the state of Virginia, which I began in 1781 and was first published in France in 1785.
Yes, sir. And I am particularly interested in the section where you discuss your keen interest in ensuring the diffusion of knowledge to the masses.
Oh, may I help you?
Well, I don't think it's much of a stretch to say that in pages 268 to 273 of the original publication, you drew the blueprint for public education in America, a blueprint that in many ways undergirds our schools today.
You are very kind.
Well, it's an amazing work. In it, you divided Virginia into school districts five miles square.
They were called hundreds.
Yes, sir. And in a great leap forward for our nation, you proposed that the people of the hundred should pay to support the school and its teacher whether or not they had children attending.
That is true.
So for the very first time, all children could get some education for free at public expense.
That proposal was based upon my strong conviction that we must educate and inform the whole mass of the people. They are the only sure reliance for the preservation of our liberty.
I must tell you that it is not possible to overstate the importance of your proposal, that the public pay for the education of the children of the community who otherwise could not afford to attend.
If a nation expects to be ignorant and free in a state of civilization, it expects what never was and never will be.
After you lay out the district structure and financing, you go on to articulate an elementary and high school curriculum, and then you describe the process of student advancement.
I see you have read my notes carefully.
Well, they changed the course of my professional life, and I'm convinced, if clearly understood, your exact language holds the answer to one of today's most pressing problems. With that in mind, I wonder if I could get you to read excerpts from your book, starting on page 268 of the original volume.
These schools to be under a visitor who is annually to choose the boy of best genius, of those whose parents are too poor to give him further education, and send him forward to one of the grammar schools. Of the boys thus sent in any one year, trial is to be made after one or two years, and the best genius of the whole selected and continued six years, and the residue dismissed. By this means, the best geniuses will be raked from the rubbish annually.
Thank you very much, Mr. President.
I go on to say that, at the end of six years of instruction, one half of the geniuses who are deemed to be superior are to be sent to study at William &amp; Mary College.
Yes, sir, but I would like to spend a minute on that last phrase that you read.
The best geniuses will be raked from the rubbish annually?
That's it. I want to ask two questions. First, is it possible that the word "rubbish" had a different connotation than it does today? It sounds a bit harsh.
As used here, it suggests poor building material.
Okay. Second, in specifying this process of choosing geniuses after a set time period, you put in place what I can only describe as a selecting and sorting race. What was your thinking?
My view is that each child should be educated well enough to transact his business and effectively participate in the civic life of his community. In the colonies, the business of the great majority of people consisted of long hours of hard labor to provide for life's basics. Given that reality, I have never argued that every child should receive the same education. I ascribe to the natural aristocracy position of John Locke. People are divided into two distinct classes, the great mass of the laboring and the elect learned. I simply designed an education process to prepare young people to assume their respective roles.
And it worked. Across the centuries, your system unleashed the creative genius of tens of millions of Americans, both privileged and disenfranchised.
I am heartened to hear it.
The problem is, sir, the America you described no longer exists. We've evolved from your agrarian society to a complex knowledge society, where almost everyone needs a high-quality education. All need not attend college, but all need to be prepared for advanced learning beyond high school. You insisted in your notes that all children must have their minds improved, quote, "to a certain degree," close quote. Well, that degree is much greater today than it has ever been.
I understand you to be saying that the rubbish, or if you prefer, those who struggle in the selecting system, as you call it, no longer expect to find gainful employment.
That's correct. The odds that they realize the American dream grow longer every year.
If what you say is true, and you seek to avail the state of those talents which nature has sown as liberally among the poor as the rich, it is clear that schools must change. I imagine this is no easy task, but while I would like to discuss this further, I'm afraid our time is up. I must call my daughter Polly to tea.
I guess we're going to have to figure this one out by ourselves.
So for this board meeting, we had asked everyone to read Part II, of which that video kind of relates to what was talked about in Part II. The fact that schools need to change, I think, was the title of that section. Were there things that stood out in particular to anyone that resonated when you read that?
He brings up the multiple intelligences, and we tend to treat, and this is still true in schools, we tend to treat our talented and gifted students as the ones who are only above a certain score on their standardized tests, and we don't look at all the different ways in which students can be intelligent. And sometimes we aren't serving students who have a really nominal ability in one area because they aren't doing well in standardized tests, especially, I think, for students who have really good spatial orientation and engineering skills are often left out because they don't do well in more of the verbal writing tasks.
I was going to say, as I was reading through it, it also reminded me of what we heard from Sir Ken Robinson when he spoke at School Board Association a year ago, talking about how the system has really been set in kind of a lock-in step, where the most common thing kids have is their age. And so, you know, we need to be thinking about how do we adjust for kids who learn differently, at different paces, think about things differently, and everyone has different skill sets. You know, some are very strong mathematically, others are strong verbally, others are very, you know, musical inclined, so our schools aren't set up to deal with all those differences.
I think what struck me the most was the, how, in the first two models, I can't remember the exact name he called them, but they were the resources that societies had at different periods of time. So an agrarian society had these resources, and if you had these, then you could be successful. What changed here in the late 20th century into this century is the, not only did the people become the primary resource, a central one, but also the laborer versus learner dynamic completely flipped on its head. So a lot of the resources stayed the same, but there was a shift in the emphasis, and that, he basically explains that's what we're dealing with, is now we have to teach all students to a fairly high level if they expect to have success as adults. So I found that very interesting.
And I thought it was interesting that he talked about the fact, and we hardly ever hear this, that we are actually educating more students to a higher level now than we ever have, but we're still falling further behind, because we still aren't doing it well enough, because of this dynamic changing.
I really liked his emphasis on the fact that speed doesn't equal ability. So I know that I have a sixth grader who is just now showing me some of his intelligences that I didn't see as privately as I see in my fourth grader. So it's, I just think it's really interesting how intelligence grows, he said, and it's not just something fixed when you're born. And that really resonated with me.
As we listened to the video, it just reminded me of something I've said a number of occasions and heard said a number of occasions, and I don't know if Mike felt the same way when he was going through Marshawn Schools, but I know that when I went through, I just... I just thought, I thought everybody aspired to go to college, quite honestly. And some could and some couldn't, whether it was financial or what. And what I didn't realize back then, this was a long time ago, that...
Yours was longer.
Yeah, mine was longer. You know, back when we were in school in the 80s, 90s, the economy could only handle about three out of every 10 kids going to college. The jobs that existed could only accommodate about three out of 10 kids having a four-year degree and beyond. And over time, from that time forward, well, and I would just say, I see evidence of this all the time. Since I'm from Marshalltown, you know, anytime we have a reunion or what have, you know, all kinds of friends of mine, you know, either are retiring or nearing retirement from Lennox Corporation, from Fisher Controls. They've been there their whole career, since the day they walked out of high school. And most of them have, you know, worked their way through their systems and stuff. And so, you know, back then, you could, as long as you were healthy and you had a great work ethic, you know, you showed up to work on time, showed up every day. I mean, you could have a good life in most of those jobs that were there. Swift, I think the name preceded JBS, was another example of that. And I did not realize, when I went off to college, that seven out of 10 of my friends or classmates were just going right into the workforce. And the problem today is that things have evolved so much where there's less human capital or labor needed because we've got, technology has evolved, robotics is incorporated to provide safer and sometimes more efficient and effective means. Now, seven out of 10 kids to get the kind of job that would provide for a good life, as we heard in the video, needs some form of post-secondary education. And it doesn't necessarily mean a four-year degree. There's many different ways that students can learn and attain certification or skills that will lend itself well into the working world. And quite honestly, there's a lot of careers and jobs that, you know, with a one-year certification or endorsement or a two-year degree could potentially pay more than many jobs that require four-year degrees. And so I think it's hard for even this generation of parents to recognize that it's not necessarily all about aspiring to get a four-year degree, that there's other pathways that kids can follow and have very successful jobs, which lead to careers, which associate with livelihoods. And in many cases, many of those types of jobs and careers may lend itself to providing further education so that people can move up within their organization, too.
I would look at two quotes about this. One is the idea that streamlining has been important in kind of this historical thinking about education. I'm looking, actually, at a summary of the chapter. Of all the reforms that streamlined the system, nothing advanced the cause of sorting efficiency as much as the introduction of a standardized test. And where this used to be used, when it was initially created, to forecast a child's likely performance, now announce to the world what the child's potential was in life, right? So there's any number of obstacles to, like, making systemic change that are well beyond the control of a local school system. But, and I don't expect an answer on this, I just wonder how we are creating a culture that encourages, on a regular basis, for everyone involved not to see the test scores as being the limit, but just a snapshot or a faint measure of current ability, not all ability or not even necessarily the most important abilities if test score X isn't up to par.
I think our college and career readiness, we are starting that work. I think it's fair to say with the high school-ready, Bobcat-ready program, that sort of thing is directly mentioned. I also think that Mr. Perna, in his remarks last week, mentioned that, I think he said something to the effect of, people hear college and career readiness and they don't hear the "and it's college/career," you know, and it's, so, that's still something to work on, I think. And that's, Valmer's pointing it out, and Mr. Perna pointed it out last week. And so, I saw that connection.
Well, and I do think sometimes we put too much emphasis on standardized testing. And again, this is not necessarily something the school board can do anything about because I know a lot of these tests are required by different government agencies. But the amount of time we spend on standardized tests now far exceeds what we spent 30 or 40 years ago. And this has not resulted in an increase in achievement. Every minute those students spend taking standardized tests is a minute they are spending not being instructed. We need to look at it that way. So if we're spending four weeks a year on standardized testing, that's four weeks a year that we are not teaching those students. Testing is not the same thing as teaching. And that's something that the public, I don't think, really always understands.
I think the phrase that I used at the work session was, weighing a pig doesn't make it fatter.
Exactly.
Absolutely. We test, we test, we test, we test, we test, we test. The one thing that I thought of repeatedly throughout this reading was the opportunity that I had as an administrator in the late 80s in a small school district, which oftentimes, small school districts are more open to trying things than are large districts. And what we tried, and it came from, my staff had the opportunity to work with Larry Lazzott, and I'm sure somewhere in here, Larry will get a mention. And he was a firm believer in front-loading success at the lower, early elementary grades to guarantee it at the upper grades. Being an elementary principal, of course, that struck a chord with me. And I had my entire staff trained by Larry Lazzott. And one of the things that he was most determined to get rid of was the time and age constraint. So you didn't have a class of first graders for nine months. You didn't have a class of second graders for nine months, et cetera. What we developed and was way ahead of its time was multi-age classroom groupings. We had, in one classroom, first, second, and third grade; in another classroom, second, third, and fourth, and so on. We did keep one section of traditional first, second, third, fourth, et cetera, for parents who wanted that. We didn't force all the parents, but eventually we transitioned to the entire school being multi-aged, where students were, a school day was just a school day. It wasn't the 100th day of the school year. It was just another school day. And they progressed at the rate, moving through the curriculum at the speed that was appropriate for them. When we weighed the piggies, we found that their test scores were anywhere from five to 10 percentage points above the traditional classroom. Unfortunately, education hasn't kept that philosophy. It's gone back to the old tried and true. But I lived students in Lucas County, which was a higher poverty rate than Marshalltown, actually, where students achieved more than their same age or grade peers across the state. I think it needs to be a consideration again.
You mentioned, Matt, when they talked about dyslexia, that many students are not diagnosed until middle school. And that's, it is common. And so I have had the privilege of teaching eighth graders to read. And I think that there's no better argument to his argument that we don't have to teach everything at a particular grade level, is that I've had eighth graders do very well with that. I mean, you can approach it differently because they're at a more abstract level intellectually, and they can learn it quite quickly if you use the right methods. And so I just, it can be done. And a lot of it's just having the opportunity, which is easier to do when you have the mixed age groups. It actually is.
Yeah, Jan, I completely agree with you. You know, I've always been open with folks that, you know, I'm an adult with dyslexia. And so I didn't have a formal diagnosis till I actually entered undergraduate college. School was not easy for me, and I got more tricks to survive it until I made it to college and actually found out what my challenge was. But, you know, over the time, if I would have kind of fallen into that traditional learning, then, you know, my path wouldn't have been to college. It would have been to do something else.
Other burning comments?
No, I liked your story, I guess, because that was the thing that really hit me, was the, learning should be the constant, not time. Time should be the variable. And I think that was really interesting to hear. So, thank you.
Others? Thank you all very much. Next, we are reading Part III. So come prepared again to share something that stuck out to you as you were reading. Any comments from you, sir? Any comments from you? Any comments about the next part?
No. Let's just...
Moving on to superintendent and board goals. Any comments? I think you'll find that Shaun has pretty well represented what was stated at the work session. May I have a motion to approve the 2020-2021 superintendent and board goals as presented?
So moved. McGinnis?
McGinnis Hernandez. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, the same. The motion carries 6-0. Todd, you're back.
Get approval for the engineer's statement of completion on the MHS parking lot project. I think the job was completed mid-August, I believe. I finally had it painted shortly after that. So it's been out for a while. Received everything from Clapson Garber on it. And I think it went really well. It was desperately needed, that's for sure.
Absolutely.
Major trucks from the construction phase of Phase 2 just tore that to shreds.
Yeah, for sure.
Made it a mess.
Everything seemed to stay right on course as far as budget-wise, too, what Chuck had previously planned. I was able to keep it even with after the extra patching that was needed to complete it, so.
Questions for Todd? May I have a motion to approve the engineer's statement of completion for the Marshalltown High School parking lot improvements as presented?
Move for approval.
Miller Hernandez. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. The motion carries 6-0.
So Todd, for the coming year, as it relates to parking lot improvements, will we look at doing an overlay on that area in between what was new from Roundhouse Phase 2 and the approach to the auditorium? And between what we did do, which was probably 80% or 90% of the auditorium lot, because particularly in that area where the handicap spots are and stuff, it's still pretty rough there.
Yeah, some of that is. Yeah, I try to work it into future projects with the district as much as possible, especially if I know we're going to have something big eventually, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Schuene?
Yes, so the next three items are all related to future agreement with FEH Architects. And Kevin Epperaly is here on their behalf. What we're asking on all three of these are board approval contingent on final contract draft language. These are drafts that are currently being worked on and wordsmithed and mutually agreed upon. So what we would like would be board approval so that we can move forward on the work while getting those contracts to an agreeable state. And then, upon that, we would ask B to sign those contracts, and we'd bring the final draft of the contracts back before the board for approval. For the most part, the contracts will resemble the prior contracts that we've had on the MHS Core Complex as well as Roundhouse Phase 2. There'll be some minor adjustments from those. But these projects have been vetted with both the Board Facilities Subcommittee and the Board Finance Subcommittee in the preceding weeks. The first project, which is listed on 5.02, is the Marshawn High School air conditioning project. This has been a priority for the district for a long, 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 long time. But we've been challenged to figure out how to do it in a cost-effective and time-effective way. What we will be looking at doing, further preliminary planning and cost estimating on would be, first and foremost, air conditioning, the original Marshawn High School, which yet is to be air-conditioned. And then we'd be looking at also possibly capturing two other projects as alternates to the main bid, which would be fire sprinkling the building. And then, thirdly, would be to do retrofitting or replacing of existing aged lighting systems with LED lighting systems primarily. Anything else to add to that one, Kim?
The overall budget is about $7.1 million on that. And the two alternates are probably in the $600,000 to $800,000 each for the LED lighting or the fire sprinkler.
With Anson Elementary, which I think most know, we've deferred a lot of work at that building as we've been...
Renee Shaw?
Yep.
First?
Do you need a motion, B?
We need a motion.
I'd move for approval on 5.02.
Second.
Motion has been made. Miller Hernandez. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, the same. The motion carries 6-0.
5.03. 5.03, the second project being proposed would be the Anson Elementary Improvement Project. It, too, would mainly be to replace the existing HVAC systems. There's kind of a potpourri of three different systems, I believe, in place over time to try to provide air to that building. That would be priority number one. Also, part of that project would be to enclose the open-air classrooms with permanent walls, which is a huge priority for safety and security. And then, thirdly, given the nature of the work that would take place, it would make sense to, once again, retrofit lighting systems to move more towards energy-efficient LED lighting with that.
Questions? Motion?
I move... By adding the walls, is that expanding the school as well or not?
No. Part of the overall plan will be, when we're in a position financially to do so, would be to actually remove some interior walls to make classrooms larger, and then add on some additional and more appropriately-sized classroom spaces. But this would simply involve HVAC and enclosing the existing open-air classrooms
Okay.
that mainly surround the library there.
Motion has been made by McGinnis.
Second.
Seconded by Miller. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. The motion carries six-zero.
The third project, which is five...
May I just say, it's about time. I started there 25 years ago. Oh, my God. And some of those very... Are we getting the south windows done?
That's not part of the scope.
Are you kidding me? Seriously?
We can make an alternate, B.
Todd? The south windows were leaking snow and rain when I was there.
Maybe it should at least be added into the estimate, find out what it would take.
We can do that. We'll see if we can fit it into the budget.
Well, it needs to be fit in before closing the classrooms. As the old principal says, having lived there for 17 years. Goodness gracious.
I'm glad you noticed that, B., because yes.
Gosh.
I believe there's still...
Do we have that defibrillator machine yet?
There are defibrillators in each building. AED machines.
Gosh. Okay, moving on.
All right. 5.04, Marsh Town High School tornado safe room. As a result of the deratio in the Presidential Declaration of Disaster, the state of Iowa, similar to the last time this occurred when they had the Cedar Rapids floods, has an infusion of millions of dollars come into the state, most of which goes towards recovery from those natural disasters. But a certain percentage of those funds have to be used for pre-mitigation efforts and strategies, whether it be planning or constructing, et cetera. And so there's a great opportunity to pursue a grant through FEMA and Homeland Security for a pre-mitigation grant to build or create a tornado safe room. As a part of the long-range facilities planning that we did with FEH at, for our high school and Franklin Athletic Facilities, one of the components of the stadium renovation would be to create a significant structure which would house teams at the stadium, track, soccer, football complex, provide team room space, also new concessions, also appropriate number of restroom facilities. Would also probably have an officials' room in it and/or a first aid station as well. Oftentimes, you'll see structures such as that, or, you know, had we had the opportunity back when Roundhouse Phase Two was done, we could have created the wrestling room as a tornado safe facility as well, but there was no funding to help support that. So I'd like to recommend that we continue our work with FEH to pursue an application for a FEMA grant. The grants are due by December 31st and then are awarded sometime in the late winter or early spring. In the event that we would be fortunate enough to receive a grant, it would pay for eighty-five percent of all eligible construction costs, so essentially eighty-five percent of the project would be covered. And I believe the projected cost for that particular structure is about $2.3 million, I believe. Yeah. So, anyway, that would be the purpose of that particular project there, to apply for grant. If awarded, we have, I believe it's three years, forty-eight months, in order to actually implement the project. So it would not be a project that we would embark on in the summer of 2021. It'd more likely be the following year before we would be in a position to fund and pursue that project. Both of the prior projects that you have approved would be projects that we would look at embarking on in the late spring, early summer of 2021, the air conditioning of the high schools, as well as the Anson HVAC.
Questions?
Move for approval on this one?
Second.
Miller Untiet. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. The motion carries seven-zero.
Thank you.
Don't forget those windows.
The next two items, the next two items pertain to the financing of the HVAC projects at Marshall Town High School and Anson Elementary School. This first item is an engagement letter with Piper Sandler to engage their services to represent the district in the sale of securities of those revenue, sales tax revenue bonds that would be issued to finance these projects.
Questions for Pauline? May I have a motion to approve?
So, okay.
A second.
I'll second it, then.
Faltis, McGinnis. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. The motion carries seven-zero.
And then the next item is the actual resolution to fix the date for a hearing on the proposed issuance of approximately $10 million in sales tax revenue bonds to finance the aforementioned high school and Anson Elementary School HVAC projects.
Questions? Motion for approval?
Moved.
Second.
Haitman Untiet. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. The motion carries seven-zero.
I should have mentioned that the date of that public hearing will be the first meeting in November.
Okey-dokey. That's why Bob seconded it. Over to you, Dr. Shute.
All right. Board policies. The policies for the first reading, we have not made any adjustments on what we had presented to you at the last meeting. So, the first one, 202.2, powers of the board of directors. Karina had presented to that. We provided an amendment, which was based on IASB language. 204.9, R1, board calendar. We made a number of changes based on just the timing for which it would be best to have those items come before the board.
Questions? May I have a motion to amend 202.2 and 204.9, R1?
So moved.
Second.
Haitman Faltis. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. The motion carries seven-zero.
And then we had four policies that we did not have in our policy manual that IASB recommends relative to one of the core functions of the board, which is the development of policies. So 209.1, development of policy. 209.2, adoption of a policy. 209.3, dissemination of policy. And 209.4, suspension of policy. We're all new policies based on IASB recommendation.
Questions for Dr. Shute at this time? Those will come back for first reading at our next meeting.
Those were first readings.
Second reading?
Okay.
Unless we make changes, and then it's first again.
So, because they're new, you want them to come back for a second reading after initial review and first reading?
You're talking now about the policy on policies, is that what you're doing? Do we have a committee?
The what?
Well, when he's talking to you about first and second reading, he's, in effect, talking to you about the policy on policies, isn't he?
The policy on policies.
Yeah, that's right.
Yes.
You're welcome.
Thank you for pointing that out, Bob.
What did we say about the disposition of obsolete equipment earlier?
I couldn't say that.
He's my greatest fan.
Okay. Now we're down to Jan.
Okay, we've got some policies here on ad hoc committees, and if we're going to change policy or amend the policy mid-year and how that happens. And basically, we're taking the recommendations from the IASB and replacing our current policies. And it all makes sense. Is there something...
Oh, it'll need to come back.
It'll need to come back, yes.
Okay.
On 208, or what's becoming 208, current 203.4, where we changed will be for may. That sentence doesn't read right anymore.
Yeah, we're going to add...
It may be.
Right.
Okay, and then that period before if needs to become a different type of punctuation mark.
Yeah, or just omit it altogether.
Yeah, but then your last sentence isn't a sentence anymore.
Okay. I should say the committee may be subject to the open meetings law if the committee is established by statute or if the committee...
Okay, if you just take the period out, that's...
Just take it out, right. Okay, and then there's one on the, another one where principle, we want the principle that's a person. It's on the ad hoc new exhibit, I believe.
That's a new policy.
That's a new policy. One of the new policies. Nope, it's the other one.
So all three of those will need to come back?
Yes.
They'll come back with some minor change, spelling, punctuation, but not changing an actual...
Any questions on those policies at this time? Any items of note and communications, Mr. Sodders?
Getting my workout in, running back and forth.
It used to be closer.
Yeah, I did, yes. So we had, I mentioned earlier during our book studies segment, we did have our excellent presentation from Mr. Mark Perna, and we have his recording of that presentation available publicly. We've been marketing that. We actually, Dr. Shute, I don't know if you've gotten any more recent update. I haven't seen any from Mark over the weekend, but most recently...
Yeah, between those viewed live and those that have reviewed the recording, it's about 500 total now.
So it grew quite a bit even over the weekend. So we're going to continue marketing that hard until the recording is no longer available about exactly a week from now, Monday evening. So hopefully, lots and lots more people watch that. Hopefully, we have a few people who are interested and want to re-watch. So that was, that's going very well. And the other thing that has come up, or came up last week, you all approved the STEM Best Grant for seven through 12, and as part of that grant, I have had the privilege of going and working with Joe Ferroline, who is right over there helping livestream this meeting, and the, our intern, Ellie Draysey, did I say that right? Okay. And so Ellie's been doing excellent, so have her classmates. They are all working really hard to learn about video production. I, myself, am also going to be learning a lot about video production. I have a pretty basic understanding, but I really want to learn more about that because I think that's a great tool that, that will help us tell our story. And on that note, we are, I also met with the Work-Based Learning Team this week, or, gosh, last week. And I'm excited to be launching into a new project, video production project regarding CTE, career and technical education, and looking at alumni, looking at students in relation to career and technical education. So it'll be, all of those things are kind of intersecting, and it'll be really fun to see what we can produce from all of that. So those were my three updates for tonight.
Thank you. Looking at the reminders, we have a virtual teacher quality committee meeting coming up on October 6th, and Jan is our representative to that. Is finance virtual?
Yes.
Virtual finance committee meeting on Wednesday, October 7th, and Bob and Sean are reps to that.
And Mike will be invited. Mike has been invited also.
Okay. The law committee will be meeting virtually on October 26th, and Jan and Karina are reps for that. And just in time, Bob, you get the policies for next meeting.
Hey.
Go out with a bang. Our next board meeting is the 19th. Have we had any committee meetings since last we met? My quote, oh, forgot, future agendas and meeting evaluation. What have we done this evening to improve education for the students in Marshall Town?
You know, we've been talking about air conditioning at Marsh Town High School for as long as I've been here, and I think a lot longer than that. And so being able to push that across the goal line, or else get it as close to the goal line as we've got it now, is pretty cool.
And Anson?
Pretty cool. Air conditioning, I get it.
Getting walls up at Anson will help with noise level and distraction for the students. I just think that's going to be...
It bothers the adults much more than it does the students.
That's probably true.
I'm looking forward to the conclusion of the schools cannot do it alone. I might come back to hear that, hear the revolutionary plans that our superintendent has for implementing change here.
I am pretty excited about the tennis complex. I drive by it every day, and I think they're looking very good.
Did everybody notice the trees that were planted on Saturday?
Yeah.
Nineteen herbivida.
And how many did you do?
A good share of them that was involved.
No, I meant how many total?
There were nineteen total.
You didn't mention it, but there's the ribbon cutting. I saw it in your notes.
Yeah, so we've have tentatively scheduled for 4:30 on Tuesday, October 27th, ribbon cutting event and grand opening.
My quote for this evening comes from Albert Einstein. I don't very often use Albert, but he said, "Education is not the learning of facts, but the training of the mind to think." So appropriate with Jamie Volmer's section of our discussion tonight. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
McGinnis Hernandez. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, the same.
Nay.
Or adjourned.